Twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by the East Texas Literacy Council Executive Director Natasha Duncan. The organization's mission is to provide opportunities for adults in Gray County to develop the basic literacy skills necessary to attain self-sufficiency and to function successfully in their community. Improved literacy skills lead to better jobs and better lives for parents and their children. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for this great city of Longview we are honored to live in. I thank you for this incredible group of leaders that are here in our charge to lead this city. I pray that you watch over them, help them in their decisions, and protect them not only tonight but every day. We pray for your guidance in this meeting, and we ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We do have a presentation tonight, a presentation concerning general government compensation study. Matt Weatherly, Public Sector Personnel Consultants, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. We'll move fairly swiftly, but we wanted to provide an overview of the work that we've been undertaking in partnership with your human resources staff, give you just a little bit of a walk through history, and then maybe let the city manager, if he would like to, kind of wrap up, speak to how this might tie in to your budget planning for 2024. Our work entailed a salary survey. The city embarks on a salary survey to gauge their position in the marketplace roughly every three years. We have about a 20-year relationship with the city dating back to a full job description review in the early 2000s, periodic salary survey updates, really with the goal of recruitment and retention. Certainly, we travel around to maybe 20 to 30 cities a year. Turnover's up, you know, it's hard to get people, it's hard to keep people. We want to ensure that we are matching up our ability and our intent with any stated philosophy, policy, goal, or strategy with relation to being really intentional about our budget for salaries and for benefits. So we want to understand the market, getting an appreciation for either where we gain employees from, where we lose employees to, or who has jobs like ours. We are a full-service city, so you have a very diverse list of just about 270 civilian job descriptions, about 870 budgeted positions. Those are really kind of normal numbers, I guess I would say, but what I want to bring to light, I think, is just how complex it is to understand wages for all of the jobs, for all job titles, for all job descriptions around the city, when we're in the utility business, and we have animal services with the veterinarian, and we have police, and we have fire. Not every city has all of those things, so we want to be very intentional about both where we get data, but also try to bring understanding to where we need to position or wish to position our wages in order to recruit and in order to retain. The historical philosophy is to achieve 95% of market average. So when I show you the survey cities that were approved in 2019 by this and prior councils, this list of agencies gives us insight into salary practices by comparing job descriptions, by comparing salary plans. We make adjustments for cost of living differences because we do have some agencies where their locales have a higher or a different cost of living than yours. You'll notice that a lot of these have either full service, right? That's a big one. We want to try and get enough data for all of your jobs to be able to weigh in on that. There are similarities either for population or for services. Historically, this list was a little bit longer, maybe frankly, a little bit overwhelming, so it was pared down slightly in 2019 by this or prior councils. But this shapes kind of a directive where we almost know the answer to the test up front, and that is, who do we compare to and where do we want to be in relation to them? So these are who we compare to, and the goal has been to be at 95% of average. When I look at defining competitive, let's use plus or minus 5%. So for a moment, give me maybe about 5% wiggle room to say, okay, I want to be as close to market as I can afford, that I can justify, and that I can sustain. When we looked at our civilian jobs, about 90% of our survey sample surveys more than 5% behind market. So we have some movement that we need to realize to regain our 95% of market average goal, even just to get back within 5%. We'll call that that 95%. One other quick bullet point there, because I think it has been part of past discussions. When we look at executive compensation practices in the market, we're going to propose that any auto allowances that are afforded to directors be rolled in to the compensation figures, be rolled into that salary plan rather than paid separately in addition. When we look at the survey cities, almost all of them offer auto allowances as well, but when we look at how we're doing compared to those other cities, it would be prudent to roll them in. This is your eye exam for the evening. This is a look at, and a peek behind about 150 pages of effort at us trying to bring forth, you know, the answer to question number one, how are we doing compared to market? This example, in the upper left-hand corner, you have a job description of equipment operator. There is a pay range for this job, right? That starts with a minimum, goes to a midpoint, has a maximum. The beautiful thing in the public sector is that all of these other cities also have a salary plan. They also have a job description that we can review to make sure we're comparing based on actual duties. What does vary from city to city is how wide or narrow their pay range is. Some agencies might start a job at $15 an hour and top it out at 22, whereas the agency next door might be competitive at 15, but they top out at 19, not 22. So it's very noisy when we look at minimum and maximum. So my illustration here gives us insight into the midpoint, which is the consistent point where we want to try and pay a journey-level competent performer. So in my example, if I give one when we're done, let's say a five- to seven-year equipment operator, I want them at the middle of your pay range. Now, when we try to inform the first question of how are we doing, this is an example of a job that surveys low in the market. Our midpoint is about 19% behind the average found in the market, represented by the red line. We're currently fourth from the bottom out of our survey cities. What is also remarkable about, remarkable about this dataset is how tight the array is from, say, maybe the fourth highest payer to the 10th highest payer. Getting to the 95% of market average is not a very big jump, and what we're proposing is actually a pretty conservative relationship to this market inasmuch that, you know, we're not terribly far off from getting to 100% of average dollars-wise, but being at 95% of average still puts us about third or fourth down from the middle of that pack, just to kind of give you an idea of the illustration. That has been the historical practice and intent of this council. That has been decided as the sustainable model for trying to keep up in the market and offer competitive wages. So there's about 150 pages of that, and about 90% of them tell a story where we're a little bit low. Now, we correct that by moving jobs to updated pay ranges within the salary table. The salary table can be periodically adjusted, but we also move jobs around on the salary table. So if a job is appropriate three years ago in a range 20, but it's surveying low, maybe we need to move it to a range 22 or a range 23 to try and get back within 5% of market. The moment that we do that, we also have to honor job families, career ladders, opportunities for employee growth, and hopefully retention. So what you'll see on this chart at the bottom is an example of really the fabric of recruitment that leads to retention. Maybe we hire you as a maintenance worker, we develop you, you attain skills and experience, we promote you to a senior maintenance worker. The structure allows a 10% differential on the pay scale, may or may not automatically result in a salary adjustment, but through reclassification and promotion, we can move employees through this career ladder. So you can see the growth from there to a lead, to an equipment operator, up to a crew leader. Hopefully, we keep people that long, right? That is the goal, is once we get them, is how do we keep them? The structure is intended to afford jobs moving through different pay ranges based on market, periodic adjustments to the entire structure. You saw that really over the last 12 to 18 months. CPI, you know, COLA, cost of living, that has dominated certainly the, kind of the conversation around how to budget for wages, how to deal with inflation. We've also anticipated living wage. So in this discussion, we're proposing that no full-time employee earn less than $15 an hour. Prior to the study, about 50 employees fit into this category. So you had 50 employees that were earning less than $15 an hour, so full-time, that comes in at about maybe 30K, you know, 31K, kind of conservatively. Most of those employees will be addressed as a result of the study. There's a little bit of a ripple effect in those job families to ensure that if we've created any compression between somebody that's below 15 coming up, who they report to or where they might promote to is very important that we honor that. We have replaced all jobs onto updated salary ranges using that 95% of market philosophy. We're also looking at, now back to my example of that equipment operator with five to seven years. If we move that salary range, and I have a five- to seven-year employee that falls below minimum, I don't know that I want to just get him or her back to the minimum because they're a five- to seven-year employee in that job. I want to move them back into the range a little bit as well. So when we give you cost in one slide, what we're really doing is talking about if the range moves, does the person move? Okay? The answer is it depends. It depends on where they are in that pay range and how long they have been in their position. So we are realigning employees across their salary range commensurate with time and job. And then, I should have mentioned this a slide or two before, all of the data that we collected was effective as of April 1st. All right? So it's 2023 data, we're leading towards 2024 planning. And the anticlimactic punchline slide, to talk or to do what we're talking about and to adopt pay ranges at market less 5%, so 95% of market, is about $1.7, $1.8 million. That is above and beyond anything else that might be presented, discussed, or considered when we talk about any initiatives for October 1 or anything mid-year, right? So I'll defer at that point. Mr. Mayor, if you or any of the council members have any questions that I might be able to answer, happy to do so.
Any questions, Mr. Weatherly? Thank you for your presentation, by the way. Nice presentation. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Carpenter?
Did you deal with public safety or strictly?
Strictly civilian.
Civilian, thank you.
Correct. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much.
Yes, sir.
We're now to citizen comment. I do have some speaker cards. We will start with Wolfie Hoover.
Hello? It's my first time ever doing something like this.
Before you start, just one second, ma'am. Anyone who's speaking tonight, please, when you approach the podium, state your name and address, and then you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Wolfie Hoover, 1517 West Fairmont. Today, I'm standing before you to hope that you have open hearts and open ideas and come and celebrate pride with us this weekend. It's on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and we will be having things for children, we'll be having vendors, and all of the things that go with the festival. But I would love for any of you to come and speak at our event, and I just wanted to publicly invite you.
Thank you so much. My next speaker card is Brenda Vauthier? Vauthier?
My name is Brenda Vauthier.
I'm so sorry about that.
Brenda is fine. I wanted to talk about...
Address.
Oh, I'm sorry, on Country Club Drive in Longview, Texas.
Thank you.
And I've...
Yeah.
Zoning.
Right. Do you want to wait till the zoning item, or you want to go ahead and speak now?
You called me.
It's up to you.
I was gonna wait. I was more than willing to wait.
If you want to wait, then we'll call you up at the zoning issue, okay?
Sure.
The other zoners, would you allow to wait? We give you the choice. We'll wait, we'll wait till zoning, now that's fine. Thank you. Shannon Moore.
Hello, Shannon Moore, 1510 Fuller Drive, Longview. I'm just back as a follow-up of talking about Juneteenth festivities that'll start next weekend. I've been talking with Brittany and Mary Ann at the city manager's office, and I want to thank them so much for listening to my concerns and everything, but we still have the same problems, and I just want to start off with the basketball tournament that's not being held on June 10th weekend. It's actually being held on Juneteenth this weekend, along with the Small Business Expo that's being held inside of Broaden Recreation Center. It was my understanding at first from the city manager's office that Rosalyn, who is over the Small Business Expo, did not want to be outside. Well, that was incorrect. When I talked to her, she said she in fact did want to be outside with Juneteenth, and she wanted to be a part of Juneteenth to make it even more special for black businesses, but she was not given that option. Also, Broaden is closed on that day, on Juneteenth, with no reason why. I also spoke with other people concerning the parade. It's still the big issue, stopping the parade at Foster Middle School, it causes so much confusion as far as bringing the kids that are in the parade, bringing them down to Broaden to y'all. It may seem like it's a short distance, but that's not a short distance, especially when your child is in the parade. For many years, it has ended at Broaden. You park at the park, and then you begin to go to the festivities. That is not the case. On the Small Business Expo that is on the 10th, y'all will have vendors outside, small vendors on the inside. The problem with that is, is that on Juneteenth, we're not going to have any vendors, as I stated before, and so the city managers were feeling as if that it wasn't enough room, but I can't understand, there's not been a change in the park itself. There was plenty of room for vendors, and food vendors and product vendors. People like to sell items that are related to Juneteenth to make it feel like it's related to Juneteenth, not just any event. This is a Juneteenth festival, and we want it to feel like a Juneteenth festival. You have a presentation of a balloon that has nothing to do with Juneteenth. It says on there that it's specially shaped, it has no shape or form or fashion that's dealing with Juneteenth at all. And so we ask these questions, I talk with Dietrich, and there's still no answers, no solutions. The only thing that we did come up with, and I will say this, is that for next year we're playing, but I say to this, that we have a park that is empty with no activities on Juneteenth, and there is still time, there are still people that are willing to do stuff on that day, and I don't understand why it cannot be considered when it's still time.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no more speaker cards. We'll move on to public safety update. Chief Boone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilman, Mr. Mcfee. First, cover some stats with you from our last month of May. Our priority one calls, our response time still remained under five minutes with four-minute and 18-second response time. Calls for service were just over, just under 6,300 with traffic stops at just over 3,000. We had 29 DWI cases filed for the month and 230 crashes, reported crashes in the city. Want to move on to something a little bit more fun, and I figured I'd go ahead and beat my counterpart, Chief Stillman, to the punchline here. This past Friday, Ms. Julie Woods did sponsor for National Donut Day a donut competition between police and fire. And Mayor, I apologize that we didn't hold up to our end on it, but I did find out that we were outgunned from the very beginning. Chief Stillman comes up here quite a bit and talks about all the training that they do for fire and EMS, and they do, but I've learned their training goes far beyond that. If you look up here at the circle, that is a flying donut hole, and the firefighters caught 25 out of 26. So that's next-level skills. That is mad skills that unfortunately, we do not have at the police department. So kudos to Chief Stillman and the fire department. But something that we could compete in, this past week, the National Arcotics Detector Dog Conference was in Tennessee, and Officer Minyard attended with his partner, Daylo, and at the end of that, there is a competition, and he actually received fourth place in Nationals. So very impressive, and kudos to Officer Minyard and his partner there, Daylo. And then also this past Saturday, Briar Shelton had a lemonade stand, and we found out about it, so we were able to stop by and enjoy a cup of lemonade with him, and I would definitely encourage anyone else that will have a lemonade stand this summer. Police, when it's hot out there, we enjoy some lemonade, so please let us know, invite us, and we will definitely swing by. And again, thank you, Mr. Briar Shelton there. And then also this past Tuesday, we had a meeting with our community members in the Spur 63 corridor to discuss initiating a renewed project to help improve the entryway into the city, and we also had two of our council members attend this as well, and definitely thank you all for coming. And we had a group come this past Tuesday. This was coordinated with Ingrid Self from Development Services and Sergeant Chip Kevke of our par unit, and this group came out of church from Mississippi, and they worked in the Clark Street area, and they removed quite a bit of trash, junk debris, and everything else, and really helped clean up that area for our elderly community that lives in that area, and also a shout-out to sanitation for assisting with this as well. And they did a great job, and they have more projects lined up throughout the summer here in Longview. And then also going on this week, we have our Police Explorer Camp, and that will, they will graduate tomorrow. I want to thank everyone on our school resource officers for hosting this and putting this on, and thank our teenagers that came out and have participated this past week. And you may not be able to be a guardian of the galaxy, but you can definitely be a guardian here in the city, so if you're ready to put on the badge, we invite you to come down, sign up, and join our team. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Boone. Any questions for Chief Boone?
Thank you, sir.
Chief Stillman.
Why are you grinning? I'll let you know in a minute. Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Mcfee. Thanks for the opportunity to provide you with an update of some things that happened in the fire department since your last council meeting. First and foremost, our bond, our public safety bond projects are well underway. One of our most recent completions is that of our new fire training tower at the new, what will be the new public safety training complex in the Longview Business Park. They recently completed the installation of that structure. Now, there's still a lot of work to do, a lot of site work, utility work, and it's going to be well into spring of next year before we're able to fully utilize that facility, but we're certainly excited to see steps like this taking place, getting us that much closer. We've been without a proper training field for several, several years now, and we've had to, had to borrow others in the vicinity, and that's put quite a burden on the department, so we can't wait for this to be completed and get it well into use. All right, I'm not really sure still how I feel about this. So we, as you know, we love to spar with the police department, we look forward to it, whether it's golf or softball or donut eating or whatever it may be. The secret is on that, the guys catching all those donut holes, we didn't let them eat for like a week. We prepared them. It wasn't anything to do with training, it was starvation. So they weren't going to let any of those donut holes hit the ground. You know, it was a fun time. I appreciate Julie Woods for letting us be a part of this, and again, go head-to-head against our brothers and sisters over in the police department. You know, I've got to say, congratulations to our Station One Seashell crew, they're the guys that stepped up to represent us. But I've got to tell you, at the end of all of this, it's a little bit of a letdown for me because I have been, I guess, I've misunderstood something pretty much my whole life, listening to music. There's all kinds of songs out there about police officers and donuts. There's one coming up right here. I grew up as a kid in the 80s, listening to this kind of music, thinking that that was just the way of the world, right? And while I'm happy we got the win, I'm a little bit disappointed in the police department for not having beat us in this competition, but we'll take a W any way that we can get it, so it was a great time. Our next offering, our community offering of our Stop the Bleed classes is coming up next week on the 12th. I highly encourage anybody that's out there that's interested in getting this life-saving training. We're right in the middle of summertime, there's a lot of construction work going on, a lot of lawn work, things like that, with a lot of different mechanisms that can cause you to have a bleeding issue. So whether you're an individual, a community group, or a church group, if you're interested in this, please give it a look, and we do this for free because it can definitely save someone's life. And just as the police department, we are also hiring. We're doing a hiring process about every three to four months. If you know anybody out there that's a firefighter paramedic, a firefighter EMT, or a paramedic only, please point them in our direction. We're happy to have them give us a look, and we'd be happy to tell them more about the Longview Fire Department. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Stillman? Yes, sir.
She does not make y'all 2-0 in the last two months?
It does.
I just checked.
It does. Now, my challenge to you is get that song out of your head the rest of the night.
Yeah, no kidding. Thank you, gentlemen. We're now to consent agenda, any items council like pulled off for separate discussion? No, may I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now to zoning. Public hearing held to consider application S-23-04, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Mcfee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a one-family dwelling in multi-family zoning district. A specific use permit is required to allow for one-family in multi-family zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There are several single-family dwellings, as well as two-family dwellings scattered throughout this neighborhood, and the applicant would like to build a home here and bring this property into compliance with current standards. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. I do have a card from Frederick Jenkins for questions only. Any questions of council with Ms. Choi or Mr. Jenkins? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a public hearing held to consider application PD-23-03, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone from heavy commercial to planned development for a retail and office and duplex cottage development located at the northwest corner of Gilmer Road and Nicky Drive. The applicant is proposing five duplexes and one cottage within this development, and they will have a private drive access from Nicky Drive. The development will allow for the women in the artisans program to live on-site at this location. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires public hearing, which is now open. I have speaker card from Amy Hollins and Julie Rachel for questions only. Any questions of Ms. Hollins, Rachel, or Ms. Choi? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a public hearing held to consider application Z-23-11, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone 9.602 acres of a portion of property located on the east side of Southeastman Road, north of Cotton Street, from single-family four to general retail zoning district. The applicant would like to rezone this property for future retail development. Eastman Road is a tech-stopped roadway, where roadway, excuse me, and is classified as a principal arterial. Principal arterials are designed to provide a high degree of mobility, service-related high-traffic volumes, and have a high operational speed and service a significant portion of travel throughout the city. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our comprehensive plan and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Staff did receive a letter from, a support letter from Pine Crest Country Club Board of Directors supporting the request, as long as stipulations are in place that would include a 20-foot undisturbed buffer zone that runs the length of the Pine Crest property and a six-foot solid wood fence. A petition was submitted in opposition to this request during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. However, no one within 200 feet signed the petition. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I do have two speaker cards. Michael Beavens?
My name is Mike Beavers. I live at 5101 FM 439 in Belton, Texas, and I'm with Sensado Development. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward on its merits. We've done a lot of development over the years in Longview, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, sir. Any questions of Mr. Beavers? Sorry about that, I couldn't see the R, I thought it was an N.
That's okay. It's my handwriting, not your eyes.
Very good. Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. You'll be available for questions. I have another speaker card, Cliff Hale.
Cliff Hale, 223 Longleaf. I do have an updated petition that we amended to, that I'll happy to turn in to anyone. We had added additional 26 signatures, and that did include the residents... the residents that are within 200 feet. We, the citizens of the surrounding area, ask that the city council reject zoning Z 23. We view the proposed changes, or any other changes to the existing zoning, as a negative impact to our neighbors and our residences. The residences in our area represent our single, single largest investment, and we ask y'all to maintain an SF4 rating for this particular piece of property. In addition, I want to reference the Board of Pinecrest letter. I am a member of Pinecrest. The general membership is not aware of the letter, and the general membership did not vote on approval of that letter. So I do not want that border, the letter from the Board of Directors to be construed as an endorsement from the membership of Pinecrest Country Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenda, yours says D. You don't want to speak to this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have no more speaker cards. Any questions of any of the speakers or Ms. Choi in this public hearing? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the public hearing held to consider application Z 23 dash 12. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 40.886 acres on the northeast corner of East Cotton and Eastman Road from single-family four to two-family zoning district. The applicant would like to rezone the property for a duplex development. The applicant is showing a 20-foot buffer zone along with a six-foot solid wood fence placed between the development and the adjacent golf course. As stated previously, Eastman Road is a tech stock roadway and is classified as a principal arterial. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. As stated before, staff did receive a letter from the Pinecrest Board of Directors supporting the request, as long as the stipulations are in place. A petition from Mr. Hale was submitted at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. No one within 200 feet signed the petition. Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to approve, but it failed for a lack of a majority vote. The vote was four to four with one member absent. This request will require, will require a supermajority vote of city council in order to be approved. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. I do have the speaker card from Ms. Brenda.
My name is Brenda Vothier. I live on Country Club Drive, very close to where this would go up. I'm not a public speaker, so please bear with me.
Take your time.
I retired here in November. Longview is advertising everywhere, the place to retire. This zone change would bring, I believe it was 110 doors of duplexes to this area. With rentals, you are going to ask for more noise. You're going to absolutely need more police presence. The traffic is going to be unbelievable, with the potential of more drugs in the area. Now, not all renters have attitudes, but some renters lack respect, pride, and regard for the area because they rent. Me, as a homeowner, I take pride in my neighborhood and my home. And I doubt that a rental area would have an HOA, because that's for homeowners associations, but they wouldn't have guidelines to keep the area clean and proper. I'm very much against this zone change. I am all for growth, as long as we use the property for which it was intended, it is now zoned residential. I don't think we should change it to a commercial. I've talked to all of my neighbors. I haven't found nobody that is happy about this. A lot of people have called and voiced their opinion to Mr. Ray Wright. That's all I've got. I, I hope you reconsider and reject this. I, I really do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
No, ma'am. We, we don't, we don't address you on this. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing is still open. Any questions of anyone at this point, Ms. Choi or any of the speakers? If not, the public hearing is now closed. Now, council, I will direct you.
Mayor, I was on with this for both hours.
Oh, I thought you spoke all at once. I'm sorry. Please come back up.
Again, Cliff Hale, 223 Longleaf. I do have an updated petition. The previous one seems like it might have been ignored, but I do want to make sure everybody knows that I do have an updated petition that does have homeowners within 200 feet. Mr. Mayor, I'm presenting to you and the city council with a petition signed by your citizens, your neighbors, and your friends. This petition is signed by those that will be the most impacted by proposed changes and a map highlighting the properties represented. A few hot points I'd like to point out to you in regards to this petition. Total signatures in opposition are 70. There are approximately 79 residences in the immediate area of impact. Of those 79 residences, 62 residences were represented on this opposition. That represents a 79% opposition. I can't think of any other political area that you can carry 79%. Of those 63 respondents that we, of the 63 respondents that I had, 62 signed in opposition. 62. That's a 98% opposition. I would anticipate this trend to continue had we been able to contact all neighbors. 100% opposition from respondents on Crescent Drive, Club Drive, Pinecrest Drive, Golf Avenue, Longleaf, and a 90% from Country Club Drive. In communication with the residents, they felt betrayed as a lack of notification of proposed changes and found out mainly by word of mouth. The 200-foot methodology for letters and a small sign simply is not adequate notification. Residents in our area feel that they've been treated as second, second-class citizens. Residents, especially on Crescent, lamented to me that their street is no longer quiet or safe as a result of the new zoning changes for SEFCO. They no, no longer feel safe to let their kids ride their bicycles, and added light and noise pollution has exacerbated stress and medical conditions by our aging population on Crescent. We all have serious concerns with the lack of buffer from the train tracks and the traffic on 259. Increased traffic and density of the proposed development will further hamper traffic north and south on a major thoroughfare, as Ms. Choi noted. And I would also like to point out, it certainly starts to look like spot zoning if we've gone commercial with a property next door. Mayor, you have done a wonderful job in your work and efforts to clean up East Highway 80. As you know firsthand, it is a long and arduous journey to try to get that cleaned up. We all know what goes, goes on on East 80, and it's going to take a decade or more to get that cleaned up. I personally feel like this project will only further contribute and compound to the problems over on East 80 and reverse and erase your legacy of the cleanup you have personally started. Simply put, we need your support, we need you to support your residents and your residents' single largest investment, their homes, and not support outside developers where Longview is just a line item on their P and L and the balance sheet. I want to thank you to all my neighbors that came out and signed. I appreciate y'all coming out and support. They're not here.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Mr. Beavers, you also had C and D on yours. I'm sure you're still available just for comments, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry for that confusion there. Okay, council, I do have, I do not have any more speaker cards. Any questions or comments to Ms. Choi? Questions of any of the speakers? Mr. Wade?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. May we invite Mr. Beavers back up, please, for just one question, if you don't mind, sir? So there's a lot of concern and talk about the, the new development. A lot of us are familiar with it. Would you mind just giving us a, a brief synopsis on this development? How this development will affect this area? And also, maybe others that you've done that have been very similar to this?
Sure, thank you. The development came out. We do all of the SEFCO projects in Texas and have for over 20 years, and you guys know those products. And we bought a large tract of property here in order to expand that development, and this property was part of that acquisition. We met with the city staff, who's awesome, by the way, and asked what, what's the highest and best use for this? What is your, what are your thoughts? It's zoned FS, SF4, but the golf course is zoned SF4. A ton of stuff around there. It's got a big blanket of SF4 over it. And so we looked at this project, and SF4 would allow you to build houses if, don't quote me, but I think smallest 1,200 square foot on a 6,500 square foot lot. So they're very small house. This isn't estate-style zoning. And the duplexes that we're proposing, the most recent project we did was on a 40-acre track in Salado, Texas, and very similar, actually, the exact same buildings. But I don't, I don't want the council to approve a picture that they have in their head, because zoning is, we would follow the code of ordinances. This is what we intend to do. This is what we will do. But it's a reasonable use. We would, we talk with staff, is going from commercial or large arterials deeper into where we live. We would choose this type of zoning out of a book if it was given to us. Commercial or retail, then we would transition to some sort of low to moderate-density residential, and then golf course or park, and then into your estate-style homes. So we feel like it's very reasonable request. We worked with anybody that reached out to us extensively, delayed this action on P and Z for two or three months, as we worked with the golf course and the country club there, and, you know, back and forth with those folks for a number, a good long time. They were very satisfied with it and said, hey, we understand it. And we could go forward with SF4, but we just don't think that's what's in the best interest of the property and highest and best use for the, for the property. So that's what got us here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions at this item?
Ms. Choi.
Mr. Carpenter?
SF4 on that piece of property versus what they're requesting, what's the difference in the door count?
I'm not sure of the door count, but SF4 allows for, like Mr. Beaver said, 1,200 square foot homes, 7,500 square foot lots. I believe the lots in this layout. Now, this is not the exact layout that we use, but you could probably get a few more lots in this, in this development.
Okay. Mr. Beavers, what is the name of the project in Salado?
Eagles Ridge.
Thank you.
That's, that's the picture, isn't it?
Any, yes, Mr. Nushtad.
Angela, on the stipulation that Pinecrest has for the 20-foot barrier, does that need to be part of the approval?
Yes, sir. That does need to be part of the approval. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, I'll remind you, this requires a supermajority vote, which means six out of seven. So we have to have a six out of seven vote to approve this. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a seven out of seven, so it's a majority vote. It passes. Thank you. We have a public hearing held, held to consider application Z 23 dash 15. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting a rezone of property located north of Fairway Oaks Lane, south of Masters Way, from multi-family two.
Just one second, Ms. Choi.
Yes, sir.
We'll allow them to exit, please. Please do so in an orderly fashion, please.
Okay, Ms. Choi, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting to rezone property from multi-family two to single-family two zoning district. The applicant currently owns the lot located 2804 Fairway Oaks Lane. The applicant purchased a portion of property behind his current property that he owns and is in the process of plotting the property to incorporate that piece into his lot and then create two lots. Fairway Oaks Lane is classified as a local street and is maintained by the city of Longview. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I do have Mr. Billy Salee here for questions only. If we have questions, any question of Mr. Salee or Ms. Choi on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We're now to items of community interest. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mayor. Come on there. Suzanne Prairie, special education teacher of Pine Tree High School. The crunch fitness educator of the year. That's something Mr. Wade would understand. I don't know anything about fitness. Summer learning began this week with two summer sessions at Pine Tree, and you have seen in the paper, and we're trying to publicize it, we have a lot of summer food programs for our young people. Breakfast and lunch to all children one to 18 years of age. Please, please take advantage of that. And again, thank you for that opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. As a reminder, Juneteenth activities will begin this Saturday with the basketball tournament at Broad and Recreation Center, starting at 8:00 a.m. alongside of the Small Business Expo. Also on Saturday, Longview Pride 2023, Live Out Loud Family Pride from 9 until 2, and then the Pride Even Louder from 3 to 8 p.m. This will, event will be held at the Mob Cop Activity Center here in Longview. Sunday, June 11th, the annual Trent Williams Football Camp will be held at Longview High School at the Lobo Stadium. It's going to be on a first-come, first-served basis. Incoming freshmen and up to seniors are invited to participate in this camp.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Mr. Wade?
Yes, I think I had a couple of things there. Sure. Partners in Prevention in Gregg County 4-H, offering summer day camps for Aspire Mentoring Program mentees. Camps include outdoor adventures, chef camp for kids, leadership adventures. Wait a second. Chef Camp for Kids. We'll get you a pass on. Thank you. Explore 4-H Project Activities, outdoor indoor archery. Longview Independent School District will host athletic camps for Longview student athletes. Councilwoman Snoddy mentioned one that's a great camp with Mr. Williams. Tennis, strength and conditioning, volleyball, basketball camp went on this week. Football, soccer, and softball. Please get involved with those. LISD is also a summer child nutrition program. I think this is great. It's something that's really well-needed. I remember it as a kid myself. Offers free breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday, except July 3 through 7. So please get involved. If that's it, the last thing I'd like to, to mention is I'd like to thank everyone from the Pride community for coming out today and speaking, and I wish you all a great, great, successful weekend, this weekend on Saturday. Please be safe, and we're proud of you, and we love you.
Thank you. Mr. Nushtad. Ms. Cambo.
Yes. Too Hot to Cook took place this weekend. I'd like to give a huge thank you to one of our community partners, the Longview Community Ministries, for helping to fight food insecurity in our community, as well as providing rental assistance and other things. Thank you so much to all the participating restaurants, patrons, and thank you again to everyone for participating in Too Hot to Cook. If you're in need of food assistance, rental assistance, or anything, please contact Longview Community Ministries. If you are a Longview resident, you do qualify for their services. And for my next item, wahahaha, of community interest, I'm so excited to pass on rookie award to John Nushtad, because I am no longer the rookie on the city council. So, freedom. Welcome, Mr. Nushtad. And I'd like to point out to him that we're also in shape, at least us on this end, you know, so we can take down Mr. Wade any day, and you never bought me a cute rookie gift. So just so you know.
It's getting ugly up here.
I'm not feeling the love.
Mr. Pertle?
I did want to thank Chief Boone for his participation on Tuesday at the meeting that he had. He showed great composure, and I think a lot of good things are going to come out of that, from that area. And next time that we have something like that, I'll make sure that the whole council gets invited and understands and knows about it, because it affects all of us. That, that, that area of town borders everybody. So I wanted to, you know, thank him for what he did and the preparation he had, and the rest of staff that showed up with him. That's it.
Ms. Mcfee?
Well, the Great Texas Balloon Race and U.S. National Hot Air Balloon Championships are just about underway. It's time to look up. Those U.S. National Hot Air Balloon Championships will come to town next week. And then next weekend, the Great Texas Balloon Race will take part here in town. I'm sure you've already seen them out I'm sure you've already seen them out practicing. It's so wonderful to see them. I hope the weather holds out. It should be a wonderful time to be at the MOCOP for the Texas Balloon Race. What a great event that is. Juneteenth closure, sanitation, city offices will be closed Monday, June nineteenth for Juneteenth holiday. Sanitation recycle will be collected on a regular schedule. And then July fourth, fireworks and freedom celebration, the city of Longview's annual fireworks and freedom celebration will be held on Tuesday, July the fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Join us at the Longview Convention Complex for a free concert and the biggest fireworks show in East Texas. The concert begins at six-thirty, fireworks begin at nine-thirty. And I'll just tell you, it's pretty amazing. Y'all need to go and be out there. Remember, it's, remember, it's free. It's free for the participants to go out and enjoy your time at the, at the event, and great concerts, too. So thank y'all for all that are putting that into, into motion. Just a quick note, the Harlton Boys Baseball Team captured the two-A state championship in baseball today with a ten-to-five victory over Shiner. They ended the season with a thirty-three-and-one record. What an amazing thing for our little sister city in Harlton. What a great guy. Good job, guys, and all the parents and coaches involved with that.